So we call for a special meeting of the Board of Trustees of Little M I S D. How is that August 7th, 2020, beginning at 6:00 P. M.?
Beginning at 6:00 P. M. in the Zeller Center for Learning and Leadership. Okay, so we'll start with the call. We call to open the session and we'll start with introduction and roll call.
Present.
Yep. All right, on the agenda, we do have item three, the public hearing. We're gonna kind of put that off for a bit, but then you started at 6:30, so it evened up. So it matches up with some public information that was put out. So we'll switch over and start with any. Do we not have pledge of allegiance on that?
We usually.
Not on special sessions, okay. All right, so then we're gonna skip to, we're gonna postpone items three and four, and we're gonna start with item five. So do we have any other citizens' input for any other items?
No.
All right, and that will, so then we'll move on to action item number six, which is consider the approval for compensation for the 2021, 2020, 2021 school year. Ms. Brown.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. Thank you so much for giving me a little slice of time this evening. So we wanted to, and it's really imperative that we do, forward to you a compensation plan on an annual basis. The compensation plan is, it's a collaboration between the Human Resources Department and the Financial Office, the Business Office. It is what guides all of our compensation decisions and for the coming year, between now and the next time we come to you next summer. So our compensation plan, it's very comprehensive. So it includes, when you're looking at your board book, it includes several items. One is the new hire teacher's schedule, or the step schedule is what kind of people tend to call it. There's great news in terms of that step schedule this year. We are proposing that it be increased. We spoke about this last week at the budget workshop, that the zero-year amount is going from $52,000 to $54,000, which is incredibly important and very much really is important for us as we look at recruiting and making sure that we get the very best talent into LEI S D so that our students have the best teachers in front of them so that they can learn and achieve. And when we look at kind of our competitors, like neighboring districts around us, we have seen some increases in Frisco I S D and Dallas I S D. And so we definitely don't want to fall too far behind where we've dug ourselves a hole and we're trying to, you know, spend years trying to catch up. So we're looking at a proposal that is increased in the pay scale for teacher new hires. And really, it's not just that zero year. You'll see that each step from zero all the way to 25 plus is higher than it was last year. Again, that's important for us as we try to remain competitive in terms of salary in the area that we're in. Also included in the compensation packet is all the other pay scales. So you'll see the auxiliary pay scales and pay rates. You'll see the paraprofessional pay scales and pay rates, as well as the administrative. And we kind of try to make it easy for your eyes, a little more aesthetically pleasing by color coding it. So you'll see like, you know, purples and greens and blues in that compensation plan. Additionally, in the compensation plan, you will find our supplemental pay amounts for our temporary workers. So this is folks who come into the district and provide kind of like one-off services. So if we hire someone to come in and be like a sign language interpreter, for example, we do have some families in our community that need sign language interpreting services. So if we bring them into like a P T A meeting, then the supplemental pay, that kind of spreadsheet that you see in your board book, that tells us how much we're gonna be paying them for that supplemental, for that service. Additionally, on that sheet, not only are there interpreters, and actually, I'm sorry, you're gonna look at that separate sheet, the one that Sonia just passed around to you. That has more updated information than your board. There's a couple of edits that we had to make to that supplemental pay scale. So that piece that she just passed out is gonna be the most up current information. So you will see translator interpreter on that sheet, but not necessarily, you won't see that on your board book. Additionally, like there's some special population services. You'll see there reflected sports game workers and just a whole host of other pieces on that. And then finally, the compensation plan also reflects the stipends. And these have been previously board-approved, but when you talk about a comprehensive compensation plan, we need to make sure that the stipends are in there as well. And that's it. So pay scales, stipends, temporary, or supplemental pay amounts for temporary workers, and then also the teacher new hire step scale. We are really glad to be able to present this to you. Another piece that I know Grant will talk about more in a moment is the retention stipends. That is another piece that we are, that's part of the budget and that we're proposing as part of our compensation plan that we, for all employees who were with us January 1st or earlier, to receive a percent retention stipend, which is in alignment with what we've done in previous years here in Little M I S D. So that is the compensation plan kind of in a nutshell. There is one additional, if you're looking at your board book, we just had a little typo where we didn't have an S. Like if you're looking at the instructional, sorry, the administrator professional salary schedule, which is gonna be your salary schedule that's in blue. If you go to pay grade three of the blue salary schedules, you'll see coordinator comma instructional. So we just left out, we left out an S. So and our wonderful Sonia brought it up to our attention. So that's a little edit that's been made on that page. It was just, you know, an oversight, so apologize for that. But most of the edits have been made to this single sheet, and that's the reason why I wanted to print this out and give you an updated piece. So that's everything regarding our compensation plan. And so the recommendation of the administration is that the compensation plan, the LEI S C 2020, 21 compensation plan be approved as presented with those few little changes, pending approval contingent upon approval of the 2020, 2021 budget.
Mrs. Brown, just one point of clarification.
Yes.
You'd mentioned January for the retention stipend. It's actually July 1st, 2020.
Sorry, yes, sorry.
For those employees that have been employed with Little M I S D, as of July 1st, 2020, they would be eligible for the retention stipend if the board.
Duly, duly revised, it should have been July for sure.
That's okay.
Is there a motion to approve the pay schedule as presented?
So moved.
Leanna, is there a second? Daley, are there questions?
Oh, I did have, I know you said there was a change from the packet. It was just one that caught my eye for the specialized therapy instruction. In one, you have, is this like in conjunction with this, or was it removed for this evaluation?
It's totally, the one that's in the book should be totally replaced by the one that you passed out, that you just got on paper.
Gotcha, okay.
There were changes to the special populations area. And then we also added the translator interpreter line. That's not in your board book, but is on the handout.
Okay, that's what I missed, I should, all right, thank you.
Okay, so I just wanna clarify, Grant, this is probably gonna require you to step up here. Actually, probably tied into the next, your presentation, but I wanna get this clarified upfront. So this is toward, first of all, doing the step raise. So everyone's gonna get a step raise first. Then on top of the step raise and getting everybody up to speed, then we're gonna give them a 3% retention stipend. That's a one-time payment, correct?
It's correct.
Okay, and then with that, my understanding from the last meeting was that's gonna take us to 100% budget versus where we normally try to budget at 98%.
Yeah, that was a sample and kind of like an example from just showing you that we are funding this. We're gonna have a balanced budget, as we talked about in the budget hearing. But we are funding it with some one-time expenditures. And then I showed you what the impact would be if everything stayed constant for the year after. So it was just extremely isolated, like we can fund this, but just know that there's one-time expenditures helping fund it for this coming year that will go away, $1.8 million of it will go away next year. And I know there were some board members not present, and I can pull up that slide if you wanna look at it and talk through it.
I think for the board members that weren't here, they may would like to know that, just so we can have it for clarification.
Okay, and so I'm not saying that we have to go up to 100% of our revenue. This is just a sample of if everything stayed constant. I wanna show to the board that we can fund it, but we are using the one-time expenditures. If you can see in the 2020, 21 initial budget, prior to the staffing plan, we had a $1.6 million surplus. So that, at that point in time, at that, at the workshop, that's where we're sitting. And the estimated cost of the hiring schedule was about $1.1 million. So we had a subtotal about $500,000. The only additional costs that may be incurred with this staffing plan are those one-time substitutes. And so the rest of the $500,000 in the budget presentation, I'm gonna put that into contingency. But on this sample here, we have a $500,000 surplus or difference in our initial budget. And if you pass the hiring schedule, it'll be $1.1 million cost. So going into 2021, 22, if we started with a subtotal, and this is just an example of just showing you the impact of the one-time revenue. The new instructional facilities allot is the new students, we get $1,000 per student that walks in or is educated through the two middle schools. And that's one time, it will for sure go away. The fast growth allotment is suspect, you know, that's, you know, for came out of H B three, we don't know how this, what will change in the next legislative session. And if that went away, it'd be a $3.2 million loss in revenue from the get-go. We reversed the retention stipend of $1.4 million. The revenue growth projection would give us another $1 million. And this is as of what we know today, you know, all their projections have assumptions to it. And then we'd budget, by budgeting 100%, we'd gain about another $1.2 million revenue, showing that we can, would have a balanced budget in 2021, 22. And again, this is not saying that we have to go up to 100%. I just wanna show that if we lose all that money, this is what we'd have to do if everything else stayed constant, which it won't. You know, because there's surpluses in the budget, there's contingencies in the budget, and we'll work it. But I think what I don't wanna do is pass this budget and not understand the impact of the one-time revenue that we're funding this with. So I think this is extremely transparent, but yet I'm totally 100% in favor of moving the step up because in 2019, 20, I believe we'll have a surplus greater than our non-major revenue. And that's a, that's a trigger point for me to say, okay, let's look at this. And we're funding our two middle schools. And so that's kind of where I is at. And again, I'm not saying that we have to go up 100%. I'm just saying this is where we're at right now. And I think I expressed in the workshop that I have more comfort doing the step increase than not because Lake Dallas, you know, is over paying higher beginning teacher salaries than we were. And if we get too far behind, it's, it'd be really tough on the educational side.
And to Mr. Olson's question too, one is, I think, just to clarify, the step scales is not, is not an increase for everyone, that's just for teachers, the new hired teacher. And then the retention though is for everyone.
Yeah, what's teachers, counselors, librarians, whoever's paid off that.
Hold on, yeah, hold on, take a step back. Make sure I just understood that. The stipend is for only new teachers or all teachers? Because that's not what I just heard.
No.
The pay scale.
Schedule.
I'm making sure, because that's not what I heard.
The hiring schedule, where it's gone on from $52,000 for zero-year teachers to $54,000 for zero. All of those steps there are for new teachers to the district, new librarians to the district, and new nurses to the district, teachers, librarians, nurses.
And then we're also bringing whole any teachers that are below that scale, correct? So if they're not at that, then they bring, so if a 10-year teacher is not at 56, 7, then they'll be brought up to 56, 7.
Yes, every employee in the district is being looked at to make sure.
I just wanna make sure, because that's not what I heard a second ago. So I just wanna clarify on that.
The 1.1.
Yes.
Yeah, I was gonna say, so what is the step increase? What is the total for that?
Well, $1.1 million.
Okay, so 1.1 for that, and then what do we have for the stipend?
Well, we had another $500,000 in the.
Retention stipend. What's the retention, so the retention stipend is?
1.4 million.
1.4, all right, just wanna make sure I'm getting my figures right.
And then the stipends that were approved, that the board passed, I think that was a couple of months ago. That was already included in the budget, so I didn't break it out here. And then also, so then the surplus of $500,000, I put that into payroll as a contingency for, to make sure we're funding the rest of the staffing plan. And we were gonna have a reduction in contingency. We still have a reduction, but not at the same level.
So, so my question is, obviously, that 3.2 is going away.
1.8 for sure. The 1.9 is on there because if anything changes in H B three, that, you know, after visiting with a lot of CFOs, we believe that one might be on the table first. And so that may or may not. But we do consider that non-major revenue, and that's what I wanna be transparent on. And I still believe that it's a, it's a good thing to move the teacher step up because we will be able to fund it, we're passing a balanced budget this year. Next year with these moves, if everything stayed constant, which again, it won't, we still pass the balanced budget. And during the budget workshop, we also talked about the risks as far as the enrollment and tax collections and state funding. You know, the ability for the state to continue to support the state funding at H B three levels. We know that those are risks and in our enrollment and our attendance. So I think I give a, it's always, the answer, the question that comes up often, do we have money to fund this? You know, that, yeah, we have $24 million in our fund balance. But it's more of, can we manage our funds over the next, this year, next year, the year after? So I like to be comprehensive in the explanation, and I think that's what I'm trying to provide here.
Yes, the question I had, sorry, so the question I had, I think you answered it. So the bump up of everything is the 1-1, the retention stipend is 1-4. It's not in the top section because it's already built into the budget we have approved, the initial budget.
Yes. Yes, it was in, it was in the budget that was presented at the workshop.
Gotcha.
This wasn't, it was a late, it was a late decision, a lot of discussions that went forward with it. And that's why that was not, and so it's isolated. And it could have been something else, but that's why.
But the price tag for that is 1-4.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I just remember having a conversation last month as a Board of Trustees, and we had some very uncomfortable discussions about where we were with our budget. And we had just approved a quarter of a million dollars for substitute. This makes me uncomfortable, to be quite honest, but.
Yeah, I think, yes. I hope, I feel like I'm characterizing our finances correctly here. And this is, you know, in isolation of our budget year. And I'm trying to expand it out to our finances over time. And we are funding based on what we have, you know, currently. Remember, Templeton came in and cut our, I guess they didn't do it, but they assessed our our enrollment growth based on new builds. And so our enrollment got cut in half, and so that, we had an impact of less revenue to fund the current year's budget. I'm comfortable knowing that Little M I S D is financially sound. And I also, in the budget workshop, I went through why I believe we're financially sound. And that is because historically, we've been able to fund all of our ongoing costs with, with non-major revenue. And we have a sufficient fund balance that's been staying pretty solid at 40%. And I think, and then, you know, so, and then plus we have a surplus up and above our non-major revenue each year. And after assessing the 2019, 20 budget, I also, you know, see that we're gonna have a surplus, and I'm gonna say about 5 to 7 million. And I think from that, we can see that some are, we're spending less dollars, and I'll go over that. When we get our audit back, and after all the accrues are done.
Because another question I had, just in terms of how we deal with raises versus retention stipends. So I think we've talked in the past, were we trying to kind of one-year raise, one-year retention, one-year, kind of leapfrog it? So are we facing the possibility of next year of having to do an increase to the pay scale and a built-in salary increase at that point? Or is that already considered in your 2021, 22 baseline?
It's always good when you do the raises to increase the step because it takes up some of the raise, you know, as you increase the step. If we give a teacher a 3% raise, like right now, a teacher that's zero years last year and going to one year this year will get a, I believe, a $2,200 raise. And if we give a raise and increase the step, if it was a 3% raise, it'd take up part of that 2,000, too. It's not, it's not a raise on top of the step increase.
So I get my question, so is that already, is that already considered in what you're looking at for 2021, 22 in terms of the recovery or kind of our potential of a balanced budget in that?
No, it's, again, no, this is just these numbers here that I wanna demonstrate. Everything is constant, there's no raise next year, there's no retention stipend next year. I'm not saying there's not going to be, I'm saying just for this analytic, it's just showing you the impact of losing one-time revenue.
But realistically, we will need to consider probably at least 2.5.
1.5 probably.
Well, I'm thinking, you know, the hiring schedule increase here is 1-1.
Yeah, the teacher.
Somewhere between 1-1 and 2.5, because you're saying.
I see what you're saying, probably 2 million, probably about 2 million.
Somewhere in there.
Yeah, there's gonna be a lot changed between now and 2021, 22.
Yeah, and Grant, can I jump in real quick?
Sure.
And that is typically what we try to do, is do a raise one year. And if we can't do a raise the next year, it would be wonderful to do a raise every year. We would love that, but, you know, that's not something that we can do this year. And I would advise the board that it's premature to be planning to think about a raise next year. You know, obviously, we would like to do a raise every year, but it's way too early. We don't even know what will happen with the legislative session, so we don't have that planned out, is that correct?
Yeah, that is, and we usually look at our raises in July after we get our certified values. And we'll talk about that in the budget hearing, too, a lot of delays that happen, including our certified values. And so I think I mentioned before, and if I had a comfort level, I have more comfort doing the step increase now than not doing it. Holistic is a fundamental, you know, where we're at as Little M I S D and competing with our neighbors. And financially, it's good that we can balance our budget. I mentioned one school district that they're not balancing our budget, that we're compared, you know, they're gonna have to pass a deficit budget, and they're about $2,000 higher in each step. And I try to have, when we went through and tried to, you know, set up the steps, we try to wanna be a little bit higher than Lake Dallas, and then find other districts that are about our size. And also a financial peer district, and that was South Lake Carroll. And we're about within $2,000 of each step that they have. But the difference is, is that, you know, we're able to pass a balanced budget.
Any other questions?
I think the only thing that just concerns me, I don't disagree with the step and that pay increase. I do wanna be competitive, I think, with other districts. A couple of things that just, I wonder is, have we struggled this year in filling a lot of the positions that we have available at the current salaries that we're offering?
We still have, we have a few vacancies even at this date, August the 17th, about three or four. That's not significant. There, we would like to be completely staffed, but with three or four vacancies, that's not super highly alarming with our size of staff. In terms of when we make offers to people, there is always feedback from, from folks that we make offers to that while, you know, there's someone next door, or, you know, someone down 35 that's more competitive salary-wise. We get that feedback fairly often. Sometimes they still choose to accept the position, and sometimes because, you know, for convenience, you know, maybe they live closer, their commute's shorter, that kind of thing. So they still choose to accept the position even though there's some compensation gaps. But then sometimes they don't, and they say, you know, it's, you know, this $3,000 that I'm getting down the highway is not worth, you know, the commute or whatever factors, other factors they're considering. So does it come up when we make offers to employees? Absolutely. Absolutely. And then, but I would say it's 50/50 on if they still take the job or if they don't and go elsewhere.
I think the other concern I have obviously is, you know, throughout the years, we've always budgeted that 98%. So going up to the 100, that kind of makes us nervous.
Yeah, we're still at 98% for 2020, 21.
Okay.
Yeah, we're at 98% this year. And we have contingencies in our budget on every level, payroll and then our non-payroll. So this was just for 21, 22. Again, just showing the impact of if everything was constant, what would happen if we lose that one-time revenue? And we can still get a balanced budget. And I think that's actually a positive. I think that the climate will be better with the step increase. And there's an uncomfortable feeling a CFO gets when they add surplus above some of the indicators. And I got that, and I think this would be a really good move. And remember that, you know, as we manage the budgets over the next two, three years, there's recovery that can happen, you know, whether we, I'm not saying this could happen, but we could, you know, cut our raises down in half or do whatever we have to do, depending on the state's ability to fund us and any other financial downturns that we have in the future. But I feel good about that we cut our revenue in half and we can still balance balance our budget by doing this hiring schedule and still be at 98% of our revenue. And we all know that that revenue this year is incredibly forecasted risky type revenue. I think we stay careful enough and we stay close to Templeton's forecast that it's safe. But this has been the most difficult budget that I've passed and, or proposed. And I think this is a good idea for Little Elm at this point in time.
Well, and I think that's what concerns me. Obviously, we're doing this in a year where there's a lot of unknowns. You know, COVID has taken quite a bit of money to fund certain aspects of different requirements that are being made of us to fund equipment and different things like that, virtual learning. So it makes me nervous, not knowing, you know, obviously, revenue too can fluctuate.
Yeah.
You know, come next year, people lose their homes or there's foreclosures or there's property tax that we're not collecting on. So to do this in a year that all of this kind of turmoil is coming on, that, that just gives me some pause, I guess.
Yeah.
So I want to make sure that we're not in a position next year where now we're, we can't fund these anymore. Or if we need additional full-time employees, are we going to be able to hire?
Yeah, that's, that's part of the discussion. And that's why I want to be transparent in the 2021, 22. We don't know what will happen in that year. We don't know if our collections will come in. We don't know if, there's a lot of unknowns. So all we know is today. And I know today that our budget is balanced based on our forecasts and that we're under Lake Dallas teachers by about $2,000. And we're under South Lake Carroll about $4,000. And we're under Frisco by thousands of dollars. And I think with adding a surplus to our budget in 2019, 20, that it just kind of screams to me that I think now's the time to adjust it and then manage the budgets into the future. And extremely manageable because we're financially sound. And we do have contingencies in our budgets. They're not going away. And could 21, 22 be extremely difficult? Yeah, if we have multiple compounding issues, if our tax collections come in low and the state cuts, and if we have a couple of those things happen, it'll be tight. And, but the relationship of this is happening now just because we're talking about a hiring schedule. It could have been FTEs. Let's say we did the hiring schedule back three months ago and we didn't add the FTEs yet. It could have been that. Well, when we go through the budget hearing, you'll see the increases in non-payroll dollars and our overheads kept going up, transportation, insurance. And so the relationship right now is, but it is controllable. So, yeah, and I don't discredit anything, anything you're saying. I don't discredit your concerns either because I'm the financial piece. It is, but I think we'll manage it through it.
Any other questions? All those in favor approving the pay scale and compensation plan as presented? Any against? And one abstention? All right, the motion passes five to one and one. Yep, Mr. Flood has his abstention. All right, thank you very much, Ms. Brown.
Thank you.
All right, and it is now 6:30. So we will, so moving on to item number seven, consent agenda. Is there a motion to either pull anything out or to approve the consent agenda as provided to us in Board Book?
So I'm.
Moved by Ms., wait a second.
Second.
All right, all those, any questions about the consent agenda items?
I did.
Ms. Myers. Motion, and then second by Jameson.
Oh, you did.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah, so did I. Okay, so all those in favor? None opposed, motion passes. All right, so then moving back up to Mr. Anderson, the budget, the 2020, 2021 budget. It shows here after, so I guess based on what he says, people can comment on it. Maybe we can't vote on it until after the decision.
Leading Board of Trustees and Superintendent Gallagher, and this is the 2020, 21 budget hearing. And there's, the notice of public meetings to discuss budget and proposed tax rate was published on August 5th, 2020. And this presentation reflects an alternative proposed budget based on the following changes. Redemption order of $3 million, principal payments in the debt service fund, and then adjusting teacher hiring pay scale. So we posted a public hearing notice in the paper and it had percentages on it. And because of the change that we've talked about in the budget workshop and then tonight, it's been adjusted for this presentation. The alternative budget has been posted on LEASD's website. And this is the proposed budget. And this budget has been superseded by an alternative budget, which includes an increase in the starting teacher pay schedule and redemption order for debt service. And I just wanted to present the budget that was posted in the paper. You can see the initial amended, and the amended budget here is as of July 31st. And this is for child nutrition and debt service, and we'll go through that. So the alternative budget, the proposed in the newspaper posting was a total function level appropriations of $79.3 million. And we had a transfer out of about $1.6 million. So we had a total budget of $80,956,000. And you can see that that budget did not increase. The only thing that increased was the function level appropriations when we moved the transfer out into payroll. The maintenance and operations, these bolded numbers are the only dollar, the only budget-related data that gets posted in the paper. The maintenance and operation percentage change went from 10.76% to 13.06%. Debt service percentage change, a negative 2.09% to a 10.75%. And total expenditure change was 7.42% to 12.11%. And the alternate proposed budget did not impact our tax rate. The tax rate, the 2020, 21 proposed budget is based on a maintenance and operations tax rate of 1.0236 and a debt service rate of 47 cents. The total overall tax rate decreased 0.0447 from 1.5383 to 1.4936. The district has appealed the tax rate to TEA based on the delay of certified values from Dent County appraisal. So we have not yet received the certified values. We received some certified estimates. So the district sent a letter to TEA to appeal the property tax rate until we get our certified values. And that may not happen, that we get our certified values and we can base our tax rate on the certified values. So the district will ask the Board of Trustees to set the proposed tax rate at the September 2020 board meeting. We normally bring it in August, both our budget and our tax rate. So that will be delayed until September and give hopefully some more time to get our certified values. The average taxable home value grew from $285,642 in 2019 to $295,134 in 2020. Taxes due on average residents increased by $14. The budget facts, the 2020, 21 M&amp;O proposed budget is a balanced budget. The overall budget reflects a 5.5% or 5.8% increase of $4.4 million from 2020's initial board-approved budget plus the transfer out. If you remember last year, coming into the HB3, we had about a $4 million transfer out to accommodate for any unknown impact of HB3. But the total appropriations increased $9.4 million. Little Elm ISD budgets to revenue. The state allocates funding based on a funding formula. This formula calculates how much state funding LEASD will receive. LEASD is a fast-growth school district and is under heavy budgetary pressures due to adding 200 to 300 new students each year. Over the past five years, LEASD's student enrollment has increased over 800 students. The proposed balanced budget is a product of ongoing instructional need assessment and prioritization. Four major economic factors which have a direct impact on school funding revenue. A slowdown or decline in property values, a recession causing an increase in collected property taxes, a downturn in forecasted student enrollment and/or attendance, and the state's inability to fund education as passed under HB3 causing adjustments to funding levels. Some budget facts on our revenue. 92% of LEASD's M&amp;O revenue is generated from state funding formula and property tax collections. Two major revenue drivers, the property values increased 6.8%. Went from 4.4 to 4.7 billion dollars. The enrollment increased 2.3% from 8,028 to 8,218. And this is the adjusted number from Templeton. Appropriations, 75% of Little Elm's M&amp;O appropriations are allocated for payroll cost. 79% of LEASD's M&amp;O appropriations are budgeted at the school campus level. The appropriations increased, again, $9.4 million from 2019, 20's initial budget to the 2020, 21 proposed budget. This is mainly due to an increase of $4.7 million for payroll and payroll-related costs, which includes $1.4 million for 3% retention stipend, increase of $4.7 million for non-payroll related costs. Other major changes and appropriations, professional contracted services budget increased $4.5 million mainly due to contracting out substitute and program intent code required spend. And right now, we have some required spending, you know, in the program intent codes that we've talked about. And there, it's been budgeted in contracted service, and that may also get moved up to payroll. Supplies and materials budget increased 172,000. Other operating budget increased 233,000. Debt payments, no debt payment in the general fund and capital budget decreased $200,000. The additional funding recap are change in payroll budget, $4.7 million. New positions added were $2,230,000. This was from the 2019, 20 initial budget to the 2020, 21 proposed budget. 3% retention stipend of $1,463,000. Healthcare benefits, 150 grand. Teacher step equity adjustments, about 1.2 million. Instructional and extracurricular stipends, 275,000. Increased substitute and campus discretionary, 590,000. And this is where the campuses and departments are allocated a, just discretionary funds for their campuses, and sometimes they'll move that into, for substitutes or tutoring. Transfer substitute cost to contracted services, $800,000. So in 20, in this coming year, HR is contracting out our substitutes. So we have a reduction in substitute payroll by $800,000. That's moved to contracted service. Reduced payroll contingency for state funding HB3, about $400,000. So we had a contingency in there because the unknown aspects of HB3 at one point in time, if you remember the 75%, we had to pay for teachers or required to spend. We weren't certain if we'd had to come back and adjust teachers during the year. So we had a contingency in place there, and that's been reduced by $400,000. And contingency and other net, about $47,000. Changes in non-payroll budget, $4,690,000. State recaptured equalized wealth, 272,000. Substitute from payroll to contracted service, now this is non-payroll. It's going up $1.2 million. That's the previous substitute payroll plus any premiums on the contracted services plus any growth in substitute forecast. Early education, that's pick 23, about $678,000. And program intent required spend contingency, about $1.1 million. And that's in the non-payroll. Property and casualty insurance went up $308,000. And this is for adding the two middle schools and plus an increase in contribution. In transportation, $490,000. Utilities, $515,000. Increase curriculum instruction, about $407,000. And net other increase-decrease, about 317 among all the rest of our budgets. Some major key indicators, the major key indicator that we talk about frequently is the payroll to major revenue ratio. Major revenue is the total tax collections, less delinquent taxes, plus the state revenue, less recapture. And the major revenue makes up 92% of LEASD's M&amp;O revenue. Major cost, 80% of Little Elm's major revenue appropriations are allocated for payroll. LEASD's payroll to major revenue, in 2016, 17, we ended with 74.92% of our major revenue was expensed to payroll. And you can see in 2017, 18, our initial budget was 79%. And our actual is coming at 73%. 2018, 19, 79%. Our actual is 72%. 2019, 20, 76%. And our audit will be completed and presented to the board in December. And then 2020, 21 is 80%. And the, the 2019, 20 budget is not final. For 2020, 21, the revenue, which was reduced from the demographic enrollment forecast and includes a one-time, $1.4 million proposed 3% retention stipend. If that was removed, would it be at 78% without the stipend? It does not include the substitute payroll, which we transferred to contracted service. And it does not include additional payroll for required program intent code spending, which is in contracted services right now. And the rest of the presentations, going over our funding functions. And the board approves the funds by, at the function level. The general operating fund, the debt service fund, and the child nutrition fund. And we compare to the prior year's initial budget. And the budget presentation estimates revenue and appropriations, shows, shows the percentage change from prior year, the percentage of total budget, and the dollar amount per student. And the budget presented in millions and comparative data is to the initial 2019. And the budget presented in millions and comparative data is to the initial 2019-20 budget. The financials in the back include a comparative data to the 2019-20 amended budget as of July 2020. The following funds are required to be approved by the Board of Trustees at the function level. The general fund, which accounts for the general operating proceeds and expenditures. The debt service fund, to account for the payment of general long-term debt. And the child nutrition fund, to account for resources and expenditures for the Little Elm's federal child nutrition program. The function level is to classify and identify the purpose of the expenditure. An example is function 11, is to identify expenditures directly related to the instruction of a student. The general operating fund. As you can see that our estimated revenue that we do pass a balanced budget in 2019-20 and also in 2021. The estimated revenue in 2019-20's initial budget was $76.5 million. In 2020-21, it's $81 million with the increase of $4.5 million. And I'm sure in the appropriations are also increasing $4.5 million. However, that also includes that transfer out of about $4 million that was in 2019-20. The major reason for the changes from prior year is the revenue increased $4.5 million from the 2019-20 initial budget, mainly due to $1.8 million of new instruction facilities allotment and $2.5 million in additional tax revenue. Appropriations increased mainly due to increase of $4.7 million in personnel costs and contingencies for program intent required spend. And there's of course, that's a higher number, but there's some negative adjustments in the appropriations. Change from prior year's final amended budget is nearly flat. Prior year's final amended estimate revenue is about $80, $81 million. And again, we'll get that towards December when our audit is completed. General fund revenue, local revenue increased $2.5 million, mainly from an increase in property tax revenue. Our state revenue increased 8.6% or $1.8 million from prior year's initial budget due to instructional facility allotment. And our federal revenue and the general fund remain flat. And so the overall revenue increased $4.5 million or 5.8% of prior year's initial estimated budget of $76.5 million to the 2021 proposed estimate of $81 million. Our major revenue, our total revenue, $76.5 million to '81, went up $4.5 million. State formula, we got $1.7 million. And again, that's has to do with the instructional facilities allotment. Property tax, we increased $2.5 million in other revenue, about $300,000. The 2019-20 budget compared to the 2020-21 budget, 23% to 24%. You can see the change in state formula is pretty flat. Our property taxes went down as far as total of major revenue from 69 to 68. Approximately 91 to 92% of Little Elm's general fund revenue is generated from property taxes and state funding formula. Our expenditures on the function level, instruction increased 13%. And we went from $5,401 per student to $5,981 per student. School leadership increased 1.7%. Student services increased about 18%. And these are the functions that we consider at the campus level. It's stayed flat at 79% of our total appropriations are appropriated at the campus. ForEx's administrative services increased 5% from $427 to $438 per student. Support services increased 14%. Community services kind of stayed flat. Debt service, second year that we have not had any debt in the general fund, capital altly, stayed, we decreased. You know, we stayed flat there. And our intergovernmental, which is our recapture increased 51%. So our total appropriations is $81 million. And the 2029-20 column does not include the $4.9 million transfer out. And on the object level, our payroll increased 8.3%. Contracted service, about 44%. Again, we had so this is from initial budget to initial budget. And we had at the initial budget in 2019-20, the $4 million that was transferred out got moved into substantially into contracted services to spend some of that PIC dollars. And that made a big impact. And then also, the current year, 2020-21, PIC dollars include the contracted service and the substitute. Supplies increased about 5.8%. Others, about 11, other operating, about 11%. And that's travel and any other thing that's a contractor supply purchase. Debt payments, flat. Capital altly decreased $200,000. And total appropriations, $81 million compared to $71.6 million. Total student, per student appropriations is, went from $8,920 to $9,851. Our debt service fund. Our total revenue of $23.6 million. And again, this, this is based on the 47 cent tax rate, $26 million is estimated for 2020-21. Our debt service payment will go from $23.3 million to $25.9 million. And that'll be after our redemption order that we proposed for the board in August. And what we want to do is refund some of our debt and it'll build capacity in future years. And 2019-20 outstanding debt was $298 million or $37,000 per student. And the 2020-21 outstanding principal debt is $307 million or $37.4 million, $37,367 per student. The 2020-21 debt service payment reflects estimated bond redemption contingent on Board of Trustee approval. And that was up to like $3 million in principal payment. Child nutrition, our local revenue, $1.6 million. And child nutrition is forecasting a reduction in revenue due to the COVID impact. State revenue stays flat. Federal revenue, again, they're mainly funded through revenue. Federal is went from $2.3 to $2 million. Again, a decrease in both local and federal dollars. Expenditures went up a little bit from 3.9 to 4.1 in the child nutrition budget. So they're estimating an $800,000 deficit. But they have a sufficient fund balance to cover it. The 2020-21 free and reduced student eligibility is 47.4% of 3,837 children. In 2019-20, it was 47% or 3,763 as of July. And this will be the budget the administration will bring to the board on our, at our next board meeting for consideration, both the general fund of $81 million. Student nutrition fund, about $4 million in appropriations. Debt service fund, $25.8 million with a total combined of $110,893,000. This is our comparative worksheet from our initial budget. Our amended budget as of July 30th. And Beth will be bringing additional final amended budgets to the board for our August. So those numbers will change. And this is our 2020-21 initial proposed budget. And you can see the percentage of change from amended. And this is our child nutrition budget, again, our initial 2019 budget, our amended 2019-20 budget for both our child nutrition and the debt service fund. And the 2020-21 initial proposed budget with percentage of change from both amended, from amended and prior year initial.
So where's the deficit?
Deficit in debt service. Oh, in child nutrition. They're going to have a reduction in revenue. And because they don't they don't expect to have as much service to the, to the students. And so it's about $800,000. And they do have a fund balance. I have that over there. So they have a sufficient fund balance to cover it for this coming year. They're doing everything they can. And anybody can if anybody has more information on it, on child nutrition, but we've had a lot of discussions with them. They're working hard and they just believe their revenues are going to come in and their expenditures are going to stay flat. So that's the 2020-21 budget. Does anybody have questions?
So if you go back to a slide that talks, has the child nutrition broken out by line from last year to this year?
Clay, can you read all of that? I think I clicked out.
Sorry about that. I think it was probably five or six from the end. Sorry.
Clay's in control here.
We should have just stopped you at the time.
Right there?
Yeah.
It just doesn't look right on that, but if you look at what he did. Yeah, because the question was grand. I was trying to figure out where you were getting the 24.9% reduction from. As you say, .2, .2, .2, or .02 and 2, .02 and 2.
Yeah, that could be wrong.
Well, when you go to your next slide, it goes from I saw it when you go next, because then it went from like $4 million to $3.2 million, I think is what it was, all the revenue. Keep going.
Yeah, so student nutrition is $3.2 million. Oh, okay.
You have to keep going. Keep going.
There you go.
There. So right there, when you saw the federal funding, it went from 2.5 to 1.9. So that's where you're getting the 24%. That just didn't reflect it in that screen. I was trying to figure out where you were coming. Yeah, so I was just trying to figure out where the 24.9 was coming from when everything looked the same on that previous slide.
Okay. Yeah, and these sheets, if you can't see them, I can email them to you.
I mean, I understand where, I mean, the federal funding, I get it. We only have 60% kids in the, yeah, in the class, we're only going to get 60% of the money. So we're probably actually budgeting a little bit high by saying it's only going to be a 25% reduction in funding when we may only have 60% of our kids in the school at any given time.
Yeah.
I mean, we'll see that's going to change every nine weeks. That's going to be the fun part, isn't it, changing every nine weeks?
I did have a question overall. So the 1-1 that we added in the item prior to this is not in here either yet?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yeah, that was proposed and that staffing plan is all in the amended budget.
Oh, okay.
So it's the first three sheets. And what happened there is we posted it in the paper and then had some changes afterwards. And so talked, spoke to legal and they recommended just being extremely transparent up here that this is what was posted. This is what we're going to be proposing in the August 24th meeting.
Okay. Dan, do you have a question?
No.
Just kind of same thing about child nutrition and then also yours, Beth.
Well, mine was just going back to reiterate some of the changes because I know we've had a lot of non-payroll expenses that have dramatically increased because of the new schools. Is that correct or a big part of it?
Yes, but the, that 44% was it's because of a lot of the PIC dollars. Those program intent dollars are, we get them, we get the dollars in our general fund and it's based on our student, our students, like for current technology and so forth. And then the state tells us how much we have to spend up to an X dollar amount. Well, the administration is being careful in encumbering it all with payroll with all the uncertainty of going into next year because once we put it in that payroll, it'll be tough to get out. So as they monitor and I guess see the kids coming, they'll start adding more payroll. You know, shift from contracted service to payroll. So right now it's a holding, a holding place. But I know Cindy's been working really hard this year and spending those PIC dollars on different contracted services or supplies. And so that's what we're doing. We're just being extremely careful with our, with those pay, those payroll dollars. Our budget, that's 44%, that's what a lot of it is.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So we just separate that out?
Yes.
So it's on little kind of bucket so we can track it and monitor it?
Yeah, it's in, yeah, we put in contracted services, sitting there as an appropriation. And as the students come and they're identified in those, in the categories, then I'm sure you'll be seeing some more payroll costs. There is this budget, you can tell there's so much uncertainty in it from the forecasted revenue and every aspect, not knowing you know, what's, what's ahead of us. You know, you guys know as much as I do. But my confidence comes in how strong Little Elm ISD is financially today going into it. I don't think all districts can say that, but we are. And so I believe that we'll be able to sustain it and do what we have to do.
Any other questions for? Okay, thank you very much. Now we do, do we have any citizen input in regards to, to the budget or the public hearing portion? Do have some, some new faces in the crowd. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, well, then with that, I guess we'll recess into closed or am I missing something?
We're on number eight.
All right, so at 7:02 PM, we'll recess into closed meeting in PL1 if permitted by the Texas Open Meetings Act Code. In Code Subchapter 551.071, 551.072, and 551.074. The board and superintendent will discuss private consultation with board's attorney, personnel, and land. Thank you very much.